I would like to call the Monday, August 24th, 2020, meeting of the South Bend Common Council to order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting.
Yes, I would. Can everyone hear me?
You probably need to speak up a little bit louder, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat directions to do so. Will be listed in the chat. Please do not interrupt the presenters or the council members. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following: your name and your address, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. Again, please do not interrupt the speaker. You will then be given three minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order ordered by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will be legally held of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Team applications. The link is available, and as Clerk Jones has indicated, she's outlined the process and the procedures for you to participate. At this time, our invocation will be given by our own council member, First District Representative, Pastor Kenneth Lee.
Thank you, President White and council members. Let us bow our heads to our gracious heavenly Father. We thank you for this opportunity for us to come together to work on issues concerning our city. We ask God that you would continue to allow us to advance our communities. We ask that you would allow peace to be among our city. We pray, God, that you would bring us together in unity. Bless every council member and every presenter today. Amen.
Thank you so much. I did notice that we had Apostle Charles Harris and Apostle Harris on the line as well. We weren't certain that you would be able to join us. I don't want to not recognize the two of you at this time as well. In terms of the invocation?
Yes. Are you hearing us online now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're so sorry. We had trouble trying to get in online.
Right, yeah.
We apologize for that.
We were just late to build, but we do want to be a part of our community and lifting up you as you go forth in doing the things that you do for the city, because we realize that your position and your role in the city is so vitally important. And we want to know you that we do support you. We support our council, and we are praying for you always as we continue to lift you up in prayer. So we thank you for every opportunity that we do get to be a part of what is happening in the community. And if you would like, we do want to pray with you as you go forth. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. Go ahead, Apostle. Before you go forth, I just wanted to... This is not an afterthought when we come in online. It's not something you, like I say, you are in our prayers. So I just, we want to pray for God's wisdom to direct you in all of your agenda and everything that you do for the good of all people, not just for a particular agenda, but for the agenda that supports the need and represents all the people. And we thank God for you as believers there, that you have access to the wisdom of God to do what you need to do along with what you know as leaders in this community, and we thank God for you.
Now, Father, we thank you so much for your presence, for your abundance of grace. And, Father, we pray right now for this committee that's joining together in a meeting tonight. Father, we pray that your anointing will just rest upon each one of them, Father, that, as your word declares, that if we lack wisdom, the act you. And, Father, that you would just anoint them in this meeting even on tonight, that this will even be a different type of meeting because of the power of your Spirit and the wisdom that you have given this group here in the name of Jesus to be effective in our neighborhoods, in our community, and in this city of South Bend. So, Father, we thank you tonight for the privilege to be able to come boldly to the throne of grace, and we thank you for this committee in Jesus' name.
Yeah, we thank you. We thank you that they are the people that we've been praying for, that you put God into their hands and places of authority with wisdom and direction. So, God, we thank you for them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
We thank you for that invocation as well as those words of encouragement. At this time, Mrs. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Teshka?
Here.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Here.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
President White?
Present.
I'm present.
We would now like to have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
Report of the Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the 8/10/2020 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been accepted. We do not have any special business at this time. We'll go to reports from the city offices. We will have update from 3-1-1, and I want to make sure that Mrs. Cynthia Simmons is online at this time. Do you see her in there? I do not. We will reach back out to her again. She was going to give an update on 3-1-1 and more in terms of the impact COVID may have had, and so that we'll come back to her. Hopefully, she'll be able to log in.
Councilmember White, this is Graham from the clerk's office. And I did try calling her.
I can't hear. Okay. Mr. Graham? Mr. Graham?
Yes, Councilmember White, can you hear now?
Yes, I can.
So I tried calling her to add her to a participant. She's technically in the Organization for the City, so she should have got to her team's application, but I do not see her in the lobby at this point in time.
Thank you. Then we'll do our best. If she can't log in at this meeting, we'll have her at our next meeting. Thank you so much. I would now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember White, this is Graham from the clerk's office. Dawn had some technical difficulties at this point in time. I will take the roll here.
Please do.
Sure. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Vice President White, or excuse me, President White?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine ayes.
Okay. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and a public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of area plan will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation will be untimed. Prior to us beginning this evening with the Bill 1220, I would like to call on our attorney, Bob Palmer, to give an explanation as to what's about to happen with that bill, please.
Thank you, Congresswoman Nisgatsky. This bill is the Citizens Review Board for the Police Department. We've worked through many, many working drafts of this proposed ordinance. We're getting very close to a final draft. Instead of filing numerous substitute ordinances over the many weeks that we've been reviewing this, we decided to hold off filing an official substitute ordinance until we got very close to the end of the public comments and recommendations. So what's going to happen tonight is this motion, this bill is going to be tabled indefinitely so that a new ordinance, new substitute ordinance, can be introduced and filed before the next council meeting on September 14th. At that point, we have to give it another first reading because the title of the bill will be changed. It's no longer going to be Citizens Complaint Review Board. It's going to be referred to as a Community Review Board. So the process, as far as procedure, starts over on September 14th, but it will be starting over as a completely revamped bill as a result of all the community input that these sponsors in the committee have received over the past couple of months. So the plans are to submit the substitute bill for a first reading on December... I'm sorry, September 14th. The meeting of September 28th will have second hearing, public hearing, and third reading that night. And unless it's continued again, there will be a vote by the council on September 28th.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to entertain a motion to table indefinitely Bill Number 1220, pending the substitute bill to be read on September the 14th.
Sheila, I would like to move that 1220 to be continued indefinitely. That's my motion. I would like to have Bill 1220 continued indefinitely.
Second.
Okay, there has a motion been made and a second. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White? President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 1220 has been tabled.
Thank you, Sheila, for joining us and asking Bob to read how that works. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Davis. I'd like to proceed with Bill 3120. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 3120 a second reading?
3120, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 1206 and 1214 Mead Street, Councilman at District Number Two in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Okay, is there a committee report?
Yes, the ZNA met today, and Bill Number 3120 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, it does look like the petitioner is present, and also is the presenter. And I'll have her give the talk after the staff report.
Okay, I would ask that you state your name and address for the...
Sorry, Councilmember. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. I'm going to share my screen here so that we can all see what we're talking about. This is to rezone property located at 1206 and 1216 Mead Street, rezoning from U1 Urban Neighborhood 1 to U2 Urban Neighborhood 2. The U2 district allows for low-density multifamily, so up to four units per lot. The petitioner is proposing putting off fourplex on each lot. Here is an image of how the site looks today. As you can see by the old staircase, that it still remains the... There used to be homes on these lots that have been removed in the past. Here is looking to the southeast. There is one home still remaining on the corner. And to the northeast as well, there's also a house. There is one, actually two lots to the north of these, and then there'll be this single-family home here. Here is a proposed site plan submitted by the petitioner. This is not 100%, but it is pretty conceptual, and we're confident. This is basically the layout that we'll be seeing. They're proposing four units on each lot, like I said, with carports behind that are accessed off the alley. During the committee portion, Councilmember Hammond asked about the sidewalks and curbs. The petitioner is present, and they can answer that. I would say that I did get information so the Public Works Department determines if the sidewalk needs repair during the construction phase, and that's who makes the determination if new sidewalk needs to go in, so that decision's ultimately up to Public Works. I would think in this case, they're pretty deteriorated, so I wouldn't be surprised if they made that suggestion. But planning does not make that call at Public Works, though. The staff report and staff analysis was that rezoning the site to U2 will allow for residential growth and increased housing options in the neighborhood while not drastically changing the established character. The U2 zoning setbacks and transparency requirements are very, very similar to U1. These are supposed to be what we call gentle density that blends into an established neighborhood well, so it's not completely out of place, and it looks good from the street, and it looks like one seamless neighborhood. The staff had a favorable recommendation, and then this also comes to you from the South Bend Plan Commission with a unanimous favorable recommendation as well. I do believe the petitioner is here, and she can say a few words and answer questions also.
Okay, thank you. Does the petitioner like to speak at this time? Is she here?
I am present. My name is Tanya Robinson, and the address is 1242 North Mead Street, South Bend, Indiana 46628. We're looking to develop, change the aesthetic of what we're seeing in our neighborhood, which is the reason why we were looking to take on this project along with providing affordable with a fresh look of quality housing to those in our community.
Okay, thank you. Council, I'm going to come back to the council then. Councilmembers, is there any questions for the petitioner? Or for the presenter? I see one, but I can't see who it is.
It's Councilmember Kenneth Lee.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lee, you had a question? I can't hear you.
Sorry.
There you go.
I just had a statement. I think this is a great opportunity. It's not too far from my district and from where I live, and I know that this is going to be something that's going to be really good for the neighborhood and the community over there. So I'm excited about this opportunity of homes being developed and people having access to affordable homeownership or affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. Who is the next council person in line, Clerk Jones?
That is Councilmember Lori Hammond.
Okay. Councilmember Lori Hammond, you have a question you would like to pose?
Yes, for Mr. Molnar. Is it possible to attach a council recommendation regarding those sidewalks to go to the... You said the area plan does not make that decision.
Yes, your attorney would probably be better to answer. I'm not sure on the legality of what we could tie to the rezoning. Typically, there's not too many development standards tied to it. The petitioner could answer if he's planning on putting new sidewalks in, for sure. But I don't know how much you could tie to the bill. That's a question for Bob Palmer, I think.
We are definitely replacing the sidewalk.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that would like to make a statement or have a question?
I don't see any other council members with their hands up.
Okay. At this time, we are going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 3120?
Councilmember Nisgatsky, this is Graham from the clerk's office. No one has placed their name to speak in favor or in opposition to the bill. I yield.
All right, thank you. So there's no one wishing to speak in opposition of the bill. So at this point, the public hearing on Bill 3120 is now closed. Is there any council members that would like to make any statements regarding this bill? 3120?
Councilwoman Nisgatsky, I would like to thank Mrs. Robinson and others that are working with her for the investment that you're making in terms of this particular area, but most importantly, to really provide affordable housing. It's much needed, and we appreciate your investment.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that would like to make a statement? Councilman Troy Warner?
I'd just reiterate what Council President White said. Thank you for making the investment in the community, and I wish we could do more than just change the zoning for you, but most of the problems we have in this community, right, are go back to affordable housing and decent wages, and so we can work towards one of those goals. Thank you.
Councilmember Nisgatsky, this is Dawn. Councilmember Davis has his hand up.
Councilman Henry Davis, would you like to ask a question or have a statement?
No, I just wanted to say to the petitioner, thank you for your investment. And to the Second District, well, obviously, you've been living over there for a while. Your council representative had the opportunity to speak with the department prior to the vote. I thought it was a great idea, and I'm looking forward to replications of this very idea in other areas. So thank you so much.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'd like to now entertain a motion regarding Bill 3120.
I make a motion, we send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
So Bill 3120 will be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. Bill 3220 has been tabled until September the 28th by request of the petitioner, as the bill has also not been heard from the South Bend Plan Commission.
I would like to make a motion that we table it until September the 28th. A second?
Okay, there has been a motion and a second to table Bill 3220 until September 28th. Clerk Jones, could you take the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Would that bill then will go in front of full council for the same, or no? I'm not sure.
You say in front of the full council. You're speaking in terms of this evening?
We just passed. Does this have to go back in front of the full council for another?
Yes, it will have to be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 3320 a second reading?
3320, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, East-West Midblock Alley from Cleveland Avenue to North-South Alley between Cleveland and Diamond Avenues, Councilman at District 1, South Bend, Indiana 46628.
Okay. And there is a committee report. I happen to be the chairperson of Public Works and Property Vacation, and this bill came out with a favorable recommendation to council. So is the presenter present?
Yes, I am.
Can I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill before us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Kathy Schuth. I'm Executive Director at Near Northwest Neighborhood. We're located at 1007 Portage Avenue. This ordinance is requesting the vacation of like a half-block alley, an east-west mid-block alley that goes between Cleveland Avenue and the north-south long alley that is between Cleveland and Diamond Avenues. This is very near to Measal School and is, was the stub alley between two properties that we developed into new construction, single-family housing. During the construction of that, we heard from many neighbors that they were... During the construction, it was blocked off, and we also heard from neighbors at that time that they would like to proceed with vacating that portion of the alley because there had been a lot of fast-cut-through traffic on that block, and it felt safer for the school and for the neighbors. During the process of construction, the contractor actually made a mistake and curbed it over. So we were set to remedy the situation. It's grassed and curbed, but the neighbors requested that we seek to vacate that alley. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Okay, I don't see any questions from council, so at this time, I'm going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 3320?
Councilwoman Niskoski, this is Grant from the clerk's office. No one's placed their name in the chat to speak in favor or in opposition to this bill. I yield.
Thank you. So, if there is no one present wishing to speak for or opposition of Bill 3320, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 3320 is now closed. Um, if there, is there any statements that any council members would like to make before we entertain a motion?
I just have one question, please, um...
Councilwoman Lori, uh, Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Lori Hammond. Um, how is that land or that property then divided amongst the adjoining properties? What is the process for that to be divided up?
If the petitioner could please...
Yeah, I'm probably not, um, entirely officially informed on this, but it, my understanding is that once an alley is vacated, it is simply divided down the middle to adjacent property owners, and that, that's a process that happens, um, I think automatically without having to, to claim it, but I might be speaking out of my depth. My understanding is it would be divided down the middle with each adjacent property owner receiving half.
You don't know offhand if there's a, a specific legal process that needs to take place? I just would like to avoid any controversy as such in dividing that property?
No, that's, that's fair. I have to, I have to admit, I'm not as familiar with the alley vacation process as to know how that works. It runs through the clerk's office, um, so I don't know if there's anybody from the clerk's office that has a better answer.
Yeah, this is Grant from the clerk's office. Um, just in my, in my tenure here, I, Kathy, you're, you're, uh, you hit the nail on the head. I, I believe it goes, um, uh, 50/50 to adjacent property owners. Um, uh, but again, I, I see, and I actually see Council Attorney Bob Palmer's hand up here.
That is the general process. Upon, um, vacating an alley, half of it goes to each adjacent landowner.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Do you have any... Thank you. Is there any other questions from council members? Seeing none, I'd like to enter, someone like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 3320?
I move to send Bill 3320 to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Second?
Okay, there has been a motion and a second. Uh, Clerk Jones, will you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 3320 will be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, the next bill is Bill 3420. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 3420 a second reading?
3420, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, north-south alley from Thomas Street between McPherson and Laurel Streets, then south 13447.5 feet to the northernmost portion of the first east-west alley between Laurel Street and the north-south alley, Council Manic District Number 2, South Bend, Indiana, 46601.
Thank you. And there is a committee report, um, from myself, Sheila Niskoski, uh, the chair of Public Works and Property Vacation, and the committee, uh, passed this out with a favorable recommendation to the whole council. So, is the petitioner, uh, present? And if you are, I ask you to state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that's coming before us.
Good evening. My name is Emily Bastine Arenandez. Um, the address is 1024 Thomas Street. I'm the executive director at El Campanito Child Development Center, and this part of the alley that we are requesting vacation falls between, um, our land on both sides of it, the east and west side of it, and our hopes is to vacate this alley to provide more areas for children to play and to remove cement and make that space more green. Um, since we own both sides of it, we, um, are hoping that this would be, this would be passed in favor.
Okay, thank you. Um, councilmembers, do you have any questions, uh, for the petitioner? Okay, if there are no questions, at this time, we will go to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill Number 3420?
Councilwoman Niskoski, this is Grant from the clerk's office. No one's placed their name in the chat to speak in favor or opposition to this bill. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Um, with no one wishing to, uh, speak in favor or opposition, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 3420 is now closed. Um, if there's any council members that would like to make a statement regarding Bill 3420? Seeing none, uh, I will now enter, I'm sorry, um, Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
I just wanted to, um, share a, a quick thanks to the director for her continued investment in this part of the city. El Campanito holds a special place in, in my heart. When I was a student here at St. Mary's, I, and, uh, it's been wonderful to see the continued development on that block, um, with green space and garden that the children are planting. So, um, thank you, Director Emily, for, for all the work that you do for our children.
Thank you. Is there any other council members that would like to speak? Or make a statement? Okay.
Motion to send to the full council favorably?
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Um, Mrs. Jones, would you please call the roll for Bill 3420?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the motion has passed and will be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, Clerk Jones, would you please read, uh, a second reading for Bill 3520?
Yes. 3520, public hearing on an, on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, Business Center Drive in the west half of cul-de-sac of Ameritech Drive, all south of Cleveland Road and directly east of the St. Joseph Valley Parkway, Council Manic District Number 1, South Bend, Indiana, 46628.
Thank you. And there is a committee report, uh, from Sheila Niskoski, the chair of Public Works and Property Vacation, and this was sent out of committee with a favorable recommendation to council. Um, is there a petitioner present? And if there is, I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that's coming before us.
Good evening, council. This is Crystal Welsh with Aben Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard in South Bend, Indiana. And, um, as mentioned, this is a request to vacate public right-of-way as, uh, partial portions of Bitter Business Center Drive and a, uh, Ameritech Drive. A cul-de-sac was planned for Ameritech Drive but never built, so we would request the vacation of that portion of the cul-de-sac so that the drive to the new development can be off of Ameritech Drive. Um, the reason, uh, we, when the, the design was made for the Business Center Drive, uh, it was to provide access to the rear property. Well, the two properties are now, the one that fronts Ameritech Drive and the rear property are now owned and will be developed as one parcel, so there's not a need for the access off of Business Center Drive to the parcel. The vacation is to, um, only to the, it, uh, does not impact the driveway of the existing building that's already there on Ameritech Drive and Business Center Drive. You can see, um, on that northern part where that round, where the cul-de-sac would have been, but it's grassy on the east side, that's the area that's, that is requested to be vacated. Think it might be on the next one. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do you have anything else for, for us, or is that your presentation?
Um, that is, I would just mention, the, uh, the proposed drive i- into the property is where the, um, what we call the eyebrow of that cul-de-sac that was never built. That's at the approximate location of the new drive to serve the entire property.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, councilmembers, is there any questions of the petitioner? Okay, seeing none. I am going to, at this time, go to the public, uh, hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 3520? I see Daniel Buckenmeyer. If you want to, please state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. This is Dan Buckenmeyer, Department of Business Development, 14th floor of the building. Just wanted to voice, uh, DCI and business development support for this, as it enhances the, uh, uh, project that is immediately to the west and northwest of this. All, all those, uh, parcels have been assembled for TCI, which is Truck Centers International, which is building a great new facility there that is heavily supported by a tax abatement, uh, approved by council last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Bill 3520? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Bill 3520? Seeing none, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 3520 is now closed. Uh, councilmembers, is there any statements you would like to make in ref- in regarding Bill 3520? Uh, Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Just want to say that, uh, we certainly appreciate the investment made in the first district, and we just look forward to many great things coming out of this.
Thank you. Is there any other council members that would like to make a statement? Okay. I'd like to enter...
Make a motion that we send Bill 3520 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second?
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Uh, Clerk Jones, would you please, uh, call the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Um, Bill 3520 will be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation. At this time, I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the hall and report back to full council.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk Jones, would you please read the roll?
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the hall. Clerk Jones, would you please give third reading to Bill 3120, please?
3120, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1206 and 1214 Mead Street, Council Manic District Number 2, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding, uh, Bill 3120, please.
Move for passage.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, would you please give third reading to Bill 33-20?
33-20, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, east-west mid-block alley from Cleveland Avenue to north-south alley between Cleveland and Diamond Avenue's Council Manic District 1, South Bend, Indiana, 46628.
Thank you. Will now entertain a motion?
Move for passage?
Is there a second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give third reading to Bill 35-20?
35-20?
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, yes.
Okay, it's not 34, oh, that's the one skipped?
Yeah, we just did 34, didn't we?
I thought we did 3320.
Okay. Well, let's go back. I want to make sure. Will you then please give, uh, third reading to Bill 34-20?
Okay. 34-20, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the fa- the following described property, north-south alley from Thomas Street between McPherson and Laurel Streets, then south 13447.5 feet to the northernmost portion of the first east-west alley between Laurel Street and the north-south alley, Council Manic District Number 2, South Bend, Indiana, 46601.
Thank you. Uh, now we'll entertain a motion regarding Bill 34-20.
Move for passage?
So, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you now please call the roll for Bill 34-20?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tejka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now give third reading to Bill 35-20? Will you now give third reading to Bill 35 dash 20?
35 dash 20. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, Business Center Drive in the west half of a cul-de-sac of Ameritech Drive, all south of Cleveland Road and directly east of the St. Joseph Valley Parkway, Council Manic District Number One, South Bend, Indiana, 46628.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding Bill 35 dash 20?
I'd like to move for passage.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Thank you. We're now entering the resolution portion of our meeting. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 20 dash 26?
Resolution 2026. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 505, 507, 511, and 513, South Michigan Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46601, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a nine-year real property tax abatement for approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at 4303 Technology Drive, Council Manic District Number One, South Bend, Indiana, 46628.
Thank you. Is there a committee report? And the committee report will be coming from, uh, Community Investment, uh, Council Member-
No problem. Yep, uh, yep. So this, uh, they'll come, or this resolution comes forward with a favorable recommendation from Community Investment.
Thank you for that report. We'll now have an update from the Department of Community Investment prior going to, uh, the presenter.
Thank you. Uh, this is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development in DCI, offices fourteenth floor of the city building. Um, just as a intro to all of these briefly, um, we talked, uh, this afternoon about the importance of tax abatements and phase-ins, how critical they're going to be, uh, as we recover from COVID, uh, how critical they are even in normal times, but, uh, uh, really looking forward to the support of council as we utilize these critical incentives to activate new tax revenue, new businesses, and job, create jobs, and investment community. The, um, ones we have before you today are somewhat unique, as we talked, discussed, as these are partnerships with developers who are seeking, uh, uh, to bring affordable housing solutions to South Bend through the state's tax credit program. Uh, it's a very competitive program, and the reason we ask for these tax abatements in advance before they've even been approved for these, uh, uh, projects is because the existence of these abatements gives them a higher score in the state's scoring rubric and gives them a better chance of creating a win-win and bringing again affordable housing to South Bend. So this first one, uh, and Graham, you can jump two slides if you don't mind, please. This first one is with Commonwealth Development. Um, and I don't know, I don't think I can advance the slide myself, but, um, uh, it's a new construction. It's 76,000 square feet. Uh, there will be, thank you, 60 units of one and two-bedroom apartments designated for seniors. It's over an $8.7 million project all-in. Uh, at the end, there will be construction jobs throughout the project, and, uh, at the end, two remaining jobs, and I assume management and so on, which the, just get into. Uh, but just high-quality affordable housing. It will be a nine-year phase-in, so their taxes will not be completely abated, but, uh, in the first two years, they'll enjoy 100%, and then it will decline by 5% every year after that until year nine, it will be 65%. And then beginning in year 10, they will pay the full taxable amount on the property. Uh, they will, still will pay some taxes over the course of the abatement totaling about 75,000. Uh, we anticipate their, uh, be paid, they will be paying about 21,000 in taxes after that, of course. That is defined, uh, by the assessor, and that's just our estimate. But that is on a property that's currently city-owned, vacant, and generating, uh, basically no tax revenue. Um, for those that may recall, this used to be referred to as the Fat Daddy's Block, and it's at, uh, the southwest corner of the Michigan and Monroe intersection. With that, I'll, uh, stop and allow Jonathan Nessberg to add anything I may have left out. Uh, he is the petitioner with Commonwealth.
We do that ask that you state your name and address, and if you can give us some key points regarding the project that is before us.
Yes, um, my name is Jonathan Nessberg. My address is 2639 Nolan Avenue in, uh, Grand Rapids, Michigan, uh, 49534. Um, and, uh, yeah, thank you for, uh, having me here and, uh, bringing this to, uh, discussion. Um, as discussed, these, uh, tax abatements are, are very important to ensure that these projects, um, are scored high enough at the s- state, as well as ensure that these projects operate efficiently and we can keep the rents low for, for long into the future. Um, this particular, uh, development is 60 units, um, and with the, with, uh, targeting seniors ages 55 and up, and it will be affordable to seniors, uh, between 30% and 80% of the area median income. And, um, and this is, uh, like was said, uh, this is the third time we are, um, applying for tax credits on this site, um, as it is a very competitive process, but we are, uh, confident we will make it this time and look forward to, uh, being able to provide, um, uh, much-needed affordable housing for seniors in downtown South Bend. And I would be, uh, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner at this point, prior to going to the public hearing portion? City Clerk Jones, can you see anyone, uh, wishing to ask a question at this time?
I do not. Oh, I see, uh, Councilmember Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman, uh, Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Yes, thank you, President White. I was wondering, could you elaborate on the two new jobs? Are they full-time jobs? And, um, and what kinds of positions do you foresee?
Uh, yes, uh, we anticipate they'll be full-time. Um, one would be a non-site property manager, and another would be an on-site, uh, maintenance technician.
Great. Thank you.
President White?
Yes.
I see, uh, Councilman Henry Davis with his hand up.
Councilmember Henry Davis?
Yes, my question's for Mr. Buckenmeyer. I know I got cut off earlier, uh, for whatever reason, if the computer was rebooting for whatever reason. My question to you is, um, and, cause I'm seeing a consistent theme here with these tax abatements, and, and I don't want us to, um, you know, get so far gone with it in, in, with the idea that these things can't happen without tax abatement. Um, so I'm going to ask you, you know, two questions. The first question is, is, do you think that we need to revisit our tax abatement ordinance? Cause I do.
Uh, did you, were you gonna, I didn't know if you were gonna do your second question. Uh, do we need to revisit? Uh, yes, we, uh, actually have that under consideration. It can only be done in even years, and with the new council, uh, COVID and everything else that has, uh, kind of belabored us, uh, in many other areas this year, we decided to postpone that. So it will be, um, the ordinance, which is pretty, um, uh, well-tenured, we'll say, is, uh, is going to be up for some revisit and some, uh, um, review in, uh, 2022.
Well, legislatively, that's our, um, our job, not your guy, you guys' job. Only reason why I ask is because you guys are the ones that, uh, check the boxes for the, you know, the developer. So I, I think we still have enough time in this year to revisit, um, how that ordinance looks and how does it play out. And the reason why I'm saying this is my second question. When you guys, what gives you the idea of what to present when these sort of developments happen? Cause you're, you're, you're presenting only what's on paper, meaning that you're not giving me an overview of the market, you're not giving me, uh, what could happen in the next 10 years, there's no forecast, uh, there is no, um, add-on additions, meaning other developments coming in, or this will spin off into this or that. You're only giving me the paper, uh, the boxes that you're checking. So is that the only thing you guys are supposed to present, or is yours, are you supposed to present more?
Uh, we are always available to, uh, come ourselves or bring other resources to council, uh, time permitting, and if, if you'd like to provide, uh, larger views, present, uh, housing studies, anything you'd like, uh, whether it's at council or committee or one-on-one, we'd be happy to do that. Um, we don't just check boxes. I can assure you, we do, uh, a lot of homework, a lot of due diligence, and, uh, we got a lot of professionals working on our team here who, uh, uh, could provide tons of, of background and, and, you know, every forecast is only as good as, you know, anybody's crystal ball, but, um, we do have some housing studies and other, uh, pieces that we, uh, do go to. I mentioned housing study that's due to be renewed, uh, soon. Um, so yes, we'd be happy to share additional things with you. Usually time in, in these presentations, time doesn't allow.
Sir, I would encourage you to do that, uh, regardless of somebody comes to speak with you or not. This council deserves more information, and the only reason why I say check boxes is because it's the same thing that I'm being presented with, that I was being presented in 2008 that I'm getting 2020. It's the same, you know, presentation. And so it tells me that I'm supposed to vote for it because all those boxes were checked, and we're not talking about anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wishing to ask a question regarding?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Nizgatsky has her hand up.
Yes. Councilwoman Nizgatsky? She muted. I, I can't get her attention, she's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
So sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to ask the developer, I know there was a couple of questions in committee, and one, um, just to make sure that this will be bid, uh, or available to be bid out to local contractors, um, in our area, and I did want to find out if he found out the question to, uh, the independent contractors.
I did not, I did not find out the question to the independent contractors yet, um, but that is, uh, certainly something I can follow up, uh, with the city, and then they can, uh, forward to you potentially, but, um, I, I need to ask that question still.
Okay. Yes, if, if you could kindly email me that information, I would really appreciate that, if, if that's not too out of line.
Okay.
Thank you. City Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wishing from the council, wishing to ask questions before we go to the public hearing portion?
Yes, you have Councilmember McBride.
Councilwoman McBride?
Following up with, uh, Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is that something that Mr. Buckenmeyer can answer about the independent contractors? Someone from administration know that answer?
Mr. Buckenmeyer, are you in position to answer that question?
No, I'm not. We, uh, uh, we don't make that requirement as, uh, um, Joseph noted, I think there is additional point, uh, totals on the state application of use, Indiana and local contractors. Um, but I, I, I can't say for certain what, what will be used, uh, if I'm understanding the question right.
So I guess what I'm trying to find out as well is under the, whether responsible bidders or under our own local, um, we've been pushing to have local contractors and want to follow. That goes along with Mr., um, Davis's point as well. Um, he, he didn't ask the direct question, but some of the things that spark my, um, curiosity as well is a lot of the developments that's going on, making sure that we are using our local contractors and resources and making sure that it's in those contracts.
Uh, we encourage everyone to use local contractors, absolutely. I mean, as an economic development professional for South Bend, I want nothing more than local contractors to be utilized. Now, the RBO, the responsible bidder, bidder ordinance and other, uh, requirements are, are, uh, part of city contracts. Now, this, tax abatements are not city contracts as TIF is. TIF, you may be thinking of TIF, which always is a city contract and, um, overseen by the city in tax abatements. We are providing an abatement, but we are, uh, it, it's a third-party or, uh, 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 more distant relationship. We don't have the ability to make, uh, requirements as to who is hired, um, by the individuals.
Thank you. And then I guess I would go along with Councilman Davis as well, that we need to revisit the, um, ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckenmeyer, as well as the petitioner, if you could, uh, research that and email the council that information as soon as possible.
Okay, cer- certainly.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting, uh, to speak in support or in opposition at this time?
I don't see anyone, um, at this time waiting to speak in the public.
We'll now go back to the council, uh, members. What is your pleasure regarding this bill? This resolution, I'm sorry.
Move for passage?
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky? Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
President White?
Aye. Can you verify if Councilmember Davis is still logged in?
Okay.
I was having some difficulties.
Yeah, I did it earlier. I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, um, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. Uh, we look forward to having that information from you, Mr. Buckenmeyer, as well as from the petitioner. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 20 dash 28?
Resolution 20 dash 28. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1714 St. Joseph, 221 East Dayton, 513 East Dayton, 517 East Dayton, 521 East Dayton, 410 East Dayton, 224 East Dubel, 404 East Dubel, 301 East Dubel, and 212 East, East Dubel as a residentially distressed area for purposes of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for South Bend Mutual Homes.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Sorry, as I mute again, yes, the, uh, Community Investment Committee met earlier today and bringing this bill forth with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so now, so much. We'll now go back to, uh, is it Mr. Buckenmeyer? Would you give a summary prior to going to the petitioner?
Absolutely. Uh, Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development, fourteenth floor of the city building. Um, Graham, if you don't mind jumping to the next slide, and as you do, I just want to point out that the next two topics we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about 10 new, and back one, 10 new, uh, uh, tax abatements right now, and in a moment, 14 that we'll change the designation period on, or request that you do, um, that will total 24, uh, uh, properties- 24 properties for this single project. So the next two topics that you will vote on are for the same project. And I want to allow Ann Mannix to talk a little more this time, and hopefully we have a few more minutes to present, and we did this afternoon. It's another affordable housing, in this case, it's single-family homes, scattered site, as you can see by the map there, 10 new homes, about 1,300 square foot apiece on average, over $2 million investment, essentially pays no taxes, now will get a full abatement, 100% abatement for five years, and then, you know, our estimate again is somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 going into the tax base from these affordable housing units after they are built, and the abatement is passed. So let me stop there, and I hope Ann is on, and can add to this, please.
Mrs. Mannix, will you state your name and address, please?
Hello, councilmembers, this is Ann Mannix, my address is 724 West Washington, South Bend, 46601. These are 10 homes in the southeast neighborhood, I'm doing this in partnership with South Bend Heritage Foundation, they will be the contractor, and they do hire local subcontractors. They're very affordable, the lowest rents are $283 a month for a two-bedroom, the highest ones are $700 for a four-bedroom, and the rents for the different houses, we have a variety of income levels, between 30 and 60% of area median, so we have tiered rents, depending on the people's incomes, and this is an outgrowth of the first South Bend Mutual Homes project, which is south of the Charles Martin Youth Center, and we have 24 houses there, and I think that's successful. The people are beginning to work together and be a community. To answer Henry's question, the first project, we had a house sell for $110,000 in the neighborhood, and I think that was because of our development. And before we started, you couldn't sell a house for $30,000 in that neighborhood, so I feel good about that, and this is managed by the residents, so they set the policies and hire a property manager. So this helps to keep it affordable, and helps to build community and leadership. So they have events and do different things in the neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
Oh, we have 80 people on the, 80 families on the waiting list also.
That's great. Mrs. Jones, is any of the councilmembers?
Yes, we have, Councilmember David.
Councilmember Henry Davis?
Ann, I don't remember asking that question, but I'm glad you answered it before I asked. I want to get to it.
What are the effects of the project?
Oh, okay, that was for the other project, okay, I got you.
Well, I got to go second, so that's.
I appreciate it. Hey, really quick, the project that you're doing, and I'm doing juxtaposed to the project that you did over there by the Charles Martin Youth Center, is the city going to help you provide infrastructure improvements? Because these areas that you're going in are older, and they need new sidewalks, curbs, streets, the whole nine, and I would hate that you are going into these areas with these new build-outs, and the landscape around it, supporting it, it doesn't, it doesn't go together.
That's correct. The first project, we learned a lot about that, and Tim Scott was kind enough to get us some sidewalks, and the other thing that cost us money was sewers, because the sewers have to be realigned or replaced in some cases, so we have about $10,000 a house for infrastructure, and if there are sidewalk programs, we try to use those in the different neighborhoods, and talk to the council people. So not all the sewers have to be replaced, they put little cameras down in the sewer lines, and then we figure out which ones have to be replaced. So there is more to it than you would think, you can't ignore the infrastructure, and we got to all our sidewalks, it took us a year or two, but they're all pretty solid now, and we expect to do that, and we understand the city's requiring it now.
Sure. So my last question is that since the city is requiring it, I would, if I were you, I would encourage you to have more of a top-level discussion with redevelopment in the mayor's office, about the TIF dollars that are supposed to support infrastructure improvements. You're putting yourself in a bad position with having to pay all of this out when you're rebuilding the neighborhoods, and that has been a discussion in this council about how do we rebuild neighborhoods. This is a perfect opportunity to start that rebuilding process, so.
Well, we tried for the TIF funds, and were advised not to apply for them, but if we get our tax.
Why?
Well, I'm not sure, but if we get our tax credits, we'll come back for it. I think the focus was to put the TIF dollars in commercial areas.
Well, that's unfair, because, look, if we're talking about taxes, and we have been for a while, we've been talking about how the taxes go through the neighborhoods and all the people that are in the neighborhoods. Look, the Scott Bend School Corporation just passed a referendum, which was another tax, most of the people that are paying this new tax are people who are in these neighborhoods, who are poor, who are you trying to house, and so it would only make sense that we were reinvesting the money back into the area where the people are actually spending the money. These corporations, the guy right before you, he has a tax payment for over 10 years.
Well, thank you for the advice, Henry, and we'll take that under consideration.
You do it, you should.
Thank you very much. And this is the TIF area, the northwest is not, and the city has invested a lot of TIF money, they put a lot of new streets and curbs and things in, but thank you, Henry.
Thank you, Mrs. Mannix. We thank you also, Councilmember Davis. Is there anyone else from the council wishing to ask a question in terms of the project?
Yes. Councilmember McBride?
I just wanted to say.
Councilmember McBride?
I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to rebuild and go along with the master plan on the southeast side, and with the different partners. Great job, and great homes and homeownership is coming out of it, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I enjoy working with 466.
Thank you.
Any other councilmember at this time?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Councilmember Lee?
I just want to say that this is exciting for our city, because it's going to affect the southeast side, and if I'm not mistaken, the northwest side also, correct, Ann?
Sure, let's, maybe we can go to the next slide, Graham, and you can see the northwest part. I mean, Dan's got to introduce this, but we'll get there in a minute. Yes, Councilwoman Lee, you're correct. Thank you. Hopefully, we'll get it this time. Okay.
Okay.
So I'm just excited to see that, that there's going to be new houses built in the southeast side and the northwest side, and at the end, 24 new homes are going to be built, so we're excited to see that.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers before we go to the public hearing portion? Any comments?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Yes. Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan?
I can't get her.
You're muted, Rachel.
You're muted. Okay.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan, this is Graham, I take responsibility for that, I accidentally tried to lower your hand, I muted you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Ann, Ms. Mannix, I just want to thank you for your continued investment in affordable housing throughout our city. Could you, could you share what your hopeful timeframe is for the, for receiving funding on the projects?
The biggest funding we need is low-income housing tax credits, those results will be announced in January of next year, and then if we got those, we could probably start construction in the summer.
Great.
But it will take about a year to build them, so it's a long-term process.
Okay. Thank you.
And before we go to the hearing, I mean, the public hearing portion, I would like to echo my support, and thank you to Mrs. Mannix for her untiring efforts, I mean, she did not just start looking at affordable housing within our city, but also, it's, she has a comprehensive approach, you begin to see our handprints in most of the districts, and the work that you have done, continue to do, is very, very appreciative, appreciated. And I look forward to, for those other 24 homes, we look forward to it as well. Well, now, Councilwoman White, yes? Thank you as well. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support or in opposition to this resolution?
I don't see anyone wanting to speak in support or in opposition of this resolution.
Thank you. Public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 20-28, please.
Move for passage?
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 20-30?
Resolution 20-30. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, modifying and reconfirming the adoption of declaratory resolution number 4721-18, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 902 North Allen, 1145 North Brookfield, 1306 North Brookfield, 914 North Cleveland, 903 North College, 917 North Elmer, 1101 North Elmer, 1229 North Elmer, 1329 North Huey, 1110 North Johnson, 749 North Lawndale, 913 North Lawndale, 1138 North Olive, and 1530 Van Buren, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for South Bend Mutual Homes.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yep, there I go, I'm muted again, sorry. Yes, the Community Investment Committee met earlier today, and bring this bill also forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We'll now go to the presenter, as well as the petitioner. Mr. Buckenmeyer, do you plan to add additional comments?
Just a few, please, and as Graham goes to the next slide, I'll just, I think everybody understands that this is part of Ms. Mannix, and in a partnership with South Bend Heritage, part of a larger 24-unit project that is being presented to Indiana for state tax credits. Again, a very, very competitive process, highlighted by the fact that this abatement that we're looking at in these properties were first granted a tax abatement in 2018 and applied for then. I just want to reiterate a little bit what I mentioned this afternoon. We give designation periods, so that typically, a project of any type has a limited amount of time to happen, and if it doesn't happen within that time, that should raise significant concerns. We should typically take great pause anytime someone comes back to, with an old abatement that, for a project that hasn't been done on time, to make sure that all promises have been kept, that the project is still good for the city, that everything lines up. In this case, again, it's a no-brainer, I, you know, we come to this with a very, you know, positive recommendation, we could have just done it all as one abatement, but it was easier for all of us involved to do this as an extension of the designation period. So in this rare occasion, we recommend your support for it, and if Ann has anything to add, I'll allow it.
I don't have anything additional.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner, or for Mr. Buckenmeyer? City Clerk Jones, do you see anyone, any of the councilmembers wishing to ask a question at this time?
No, I do not see anyone wishing to ask a question.
Thank you. We'll now go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone waiting to speak in support or in opposition?
I don't see anyone waiting to speak for or against the resolution.
Thank you. Public hearing portion is now closed. Councilmembers, what is your pleasure regarding Resolution 20-30?
Move for passage?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to Bill's first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 36-20 a first reading?
36-20. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend zoning ordinance by repealing the designation of a local historic landmark, St. Joseph Ordinance Number 127-78, for property located at 60649 Hickory Road, Councilmanic District 5, South Bend, Indiana 46614.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 36-20. That motion should read that Bill 36-20 should be referred to HPC for a September 21st meeting, and then back to ZNA for our September meeting. It will be September the 28th. So move. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 37-20 a first reading?
37-20. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at the northwest corner of Scott and Wayne Street, Councilmanic District Number 1, South Bend, Indiana 46601.
I would like to entertain a motion that Bill 37-20 would go to the BCA for a September 8th meeting, and then back to ZNA for our September 14th meeting. So move. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give first reading to Bill 38-20?
38-20. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 4303 Technology Drive, Councilmanic District Number 1, South Bend, Indiana 46628.
We'd like to entertain a motion that Bill 38-20 would go to the BCA for a September 8th meeting, then back to ZNA for our September 14th meeting.
So, move.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond. Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka.
Aye.
Councilmember Nistowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you also give first reading to Bill 39-20?
39-20. First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 316 East Monroe Street, Councilmanic District Number 2, South Bend, Indiana 46601.
I would like to entertain a motion that Bill 39-20 would go to the BCA for a September 8th meeting, then back to ZNA for our September 14th meeting. So, move. Is, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka.
Aye.
Councilmember Nistowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to any unfinished business and we do not have, to my knowledge, any unfinished business. We'll now go to new business. Is there any new business from council members?
President White, I would like to announce that there's going to be a get-out-to-vote community rally. Some members of the council partnered with the Notre Dame coaching staff and the food bank, Northern Indiana Food Bank, and also Martin Supermarket to, the goal is to raise $25,000 to get 250 families $100 food vouchers to help out with the food insecurities in our community. And that's going to be on Friday, September the 4th, at Howard Park.
Thank you so much. And information is available on the web as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. Also, a press release will be coming out as well.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any other new business you would like to share at this time?
President White.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis has his hand up.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, thanks. Look, I, real quick, I wanted to get some understanding and I was being very serious when I was asking those questions of Mr. Buckenmeyer. I just wanted to inform my colleagues that your question is, is what is going to make South Bend better or, or not? We have to interrogate the process and ask a number of questions to improve the projects, but also our level of understanding. What we're continuing to get is a boilerplate presentation. It's the same presentation I've seen for the last 10 years. And it's nothing wrong with that because we haven't required anything different. And so, we have to figure out what is the greater impact of what is happening with these developments. I was very reluctant in voting for both of those because that conversation wasn't happening because I know better now. So, I'm just really interested in revisiting this tax abatement ordinance in the very near future. Whomever is interested, I, I think that it will be a very good conversation. I, I don't know if we can get it done before the end of the year, but I'm willing to begin the discussion. And I'm also not only willing to begin the discussion, I'm willing to start putting things on paper for a discussion on council floor about it. So, whomever is interested, Sheila, you have some great points about the, the contractors. That needs to be a part of the discussion. We have to keep the money local as much as we can. So, if anyone wants to participate, please let me know. I, I think it's a valuable conversation and hopefully that we improve our way of, we'll improve our tax base. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else before I go to privilege of the floor?
Wait a minute. We have Councilmember Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Yes, President White, I, I'm not really sure. I, I think this constitutes new business. I really just want to issue a reminder to community members with the eviction moratorium having ended in, on August 14th, to remind people that rent and utility support does exist and to visit the city's website, southbendin.gov, COVID aid resources for, for utility and rental assistance and legal assistance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you as well. Clerk Jones, anyone else if, before I go to the privilege of the floor?
No, there is no one else.
Thank you. We're now at the privilege of the floor. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and address. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting, meeting shall be a total 30 minutes. Individuals will not be permitted to address topics which the council has previously heard on the agenda. At this time, Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor?
Councilmember White, this is Graham from the clerk's office. We have one individual that has submitted their name, Ava. If you're still in the, in the meeting at this point, Ava, if you'd like to unmute yourself at this time, say your name and address for the record and proceed with your remarks. You have three minutes and I will be timing.
Thank you.
I do not see, unfortunately, I do not see Ava in the meeting at this point. And, and that would exhaust our speakers list, Council, President White?
Well, thank you so much. And again, I will get back with the council in regards to our update. I will get with Mrs. Simmons as well. So, if there's no other business, I appreciate each and every one of you. Again, as I always would say, stay safe and healthy and I'll see you on Wednesday, which is our next budget hearing. So, if there's no other comments and no other business, we stand adjourned and have a peaceful evening as well.
Thank you, President White. You too.
Bye everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, President White.
Good night. Bye-bye.
Thank you, President White.
Love you guys. See you guys.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Is everybody still on?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. I just wanted to take this opportunity to let you all know that this is Graham Sparks' last meeting with us. This is his last week. So, I don't know how many people are still on here. I wanted to say that so you all can tell him goodbye. But we'll have something at the end of the week too, but I just wanted to mention that. This is his last meeting, his last council meeting.
So, did we vote on if Graham could actually leave his job or not?
No, nobody voted, nobody made a motion.
Denied.
Clerk Jones, do, do the roll call.
Clerk Jones, I kind of clicked off too early. Are you saying that this week is Mr. Graham's, Sparks' last time with us? Oh, wow. Did he get permission to leave?
Nobody made a motion or anything. You know, and, and I don't think we have a court.